Good evening. We will call to order the April 11th, 2024 Danby Select Board Meeting. And would you please rise and join me in the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, in the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clark, would you please call the roll? Where'd she go?
Gone.
She might have had to use the restroom. Well.
Well, let's see.
Well, in the meantime, I will call the roll. Abbott. Fuller. Present. Haynes.
Here.
Powers.
Here.
Bender. So we have a quorum. Beth, would you please read the procedure for remote access?
Procedure for remote attendance at select board meetings. Remote access to select board meetings, while not required by law, is offered in order to encourage access and participation for as many of our town citizens as possible. It is understood that a select board meeting is a meeting open to the public, but not a public meeting per se. Businesses conduct it and votes are cast by board members. Therefore, public attendees in person or remote, who wish to comment on an agenda item, agenda action item, when it is addressed in the course of the meeting, should indicate such intention during the public comment at the beginning of the meeting. To maintain order as well as the efficiency of the meeting, the rules for remote attendee participation are: Remote attendees will be muted by online host upon joining the meeting, remaining so unless recognized to speak. Intention or desire to speak in order to comment or ask questions will be indicated by use of the hand raising function of the remote platform. People will be recognized in the order in which the hand raising function is activated. Online host will alert the chair to the presence of remote questions and comments. Remote participants, when recognized, will unmute their device and identify themselves with clearly spoken first and last name. Comment or question will be limited to two to three minutes, after which participant will be muted. This time limit will apply to in-person participants as well. General ground rules concerning decorum remains the same as that which is expected of citizens, guests, and board members attending in person. Namely, the speaker will not be interrupted and will not interrupt other speakers. The speaker will treat the proceedings and other speakers with dignity and respect, addressing the issue and not personalities. Procedures for use of the online platform and the above standards will be reviewed at the beginning of each meeting. And my name is Beth Thompson. So, remote participants, please identify yourselves when you want to speak.
And who do we have with us this evening?
Um, well, I'm trying to get my D back. I have Doug White, Sharon White, Annette Smith, Gary Dur, and I think there's somebody else, but I haven't got that in my picture. Is it the phone there? Somebody's iPhone.
Next, I will entertain a motion to set the agenda. As you can see, I wrote on there, we are rescheduling the Lincoln Tax Collector's report. We are also adding Driscoll Brothers to the fleet permit. And there has been a request for executive session for a personnel matter, which we should probably put right above all the business so that we're not keeping the, uh, this will, uh, not keep anybody waiting if they want to stick around for anything.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And now we'll have public comment.
I don't have anyone here wishing to make public comments.
So nobody has any comments on any of the things on our agenda that they'd like to have time for? Easy enough. Uh, next, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of the select board meeting of March 14th, 2024.
Don't make a motion.
Motion by Powers, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Fuller. Any corrections to the minutes? Not hearing any. All those in favor of God and the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we will move on to a presentation about Bridge Number Seven, which is just up here on the Brook Road. And we have Adam Gudrow, who is the Vermont Agency of Transportation Project Manager. Adam.
Thank you. So as Brad mentioned, I'm, uh, Adam Gudrow, the V-Trans Project Manager for the bridge project on Brook Hill Road. I have with me here tonight Andrew Lamieux. Second. I have with me tonight Andrew Lamieux, who is the lead design engineer on this project. So he'll be taking you through the technical aspects of this. And then at the end, we'll open up to questions from the select board on this, and then try to reach consensus. So the purpose of why we're here today is to review the current scope of the bridge, which is a rehab right now. It's a superstructure replacement. We'll also present a bridge replacement alternative. And then we'll open it up for questions. And then our goal is to achieve some kind of consensus on the scope moving forward. That doesn't necessarily have to be here tonight, but we will need the town's approval to change scope. So with that, I'll hand it over to Andrew.
Okay, so, um, sounds like you all are familiar with Bridge Seven. Just up the road here. This is a Google Earth image of the photo, of the bridge. You can see that, uh, as you all know, Brook Road's quite curvy. Before we, before I dive into the specifics, I just want to, for anyone that's not familiar with some basic bridge terminology, just wanted to touch on that real quick. Specifically, references to the substructure are just generally the foundations of the bridge, consisting of the abutments, the wing walls that retain the soil on the side, and then the footings, which are, spread the loads out to the soil. And then superstructure is just the beams, the deck, and the bearings, and the railings, all as one component. And I'm also going to be addressing some hydraulic terms. Specifically, the important part on this is any references to bank full width. Is, I'm talking about the, uh, that's basically the tops of the stream bank. And when the stream rises above the bank full width, that's when it's starting to flood out onto the flood plain. So, um, just a brief recap from a presentation a couple of years back to y'all about the existing conditions on Bridge Seven that led us to have a project here. Um, the existing bridge is a 40-foot T-beam bridge built in 1928 and owned by the town of Danby. So, um, a lot of text on here. Basically, the essence of what's important on this is the superstructure of the bridge is in relatively iffy condition. It's rated a five for fair. It has a significant corrosion on its reinforcing and scaling of the concrete and spalls, such as these ones on the underside of the deck and on the beams. While the deck and superstructure are both in fair condition, the substructure is rated a seven, which is considered good condition. These are just a couple of representative photos of the substructures, calling attention to, uh, this is Wing Wall Two. You can see up near where the superstructure meets the substructure. There's some concrete deterioration and cracking with some efflorescence, excuse me, efflorescence, which is this white spot, which is salts coming through the concrete in the areas where it's cracked. And then this is the general condition of abutment two. Doesn't look too bad, though there is some deterioration. And I did want to point out, on site visits, we did observe on Wing Wall Four here, we're kind of zoomed in. It's hard to tell on the screen, but on Wing Wall Four and Abutment One, there's a couple of full height vertical cracks. They haven't changed much since the early 1990s, perhaps gradually expanding a little bit. They're not a huge concern structurally, but they are present, which could drive future deterioration over time. And I also wanted to draw attention to the substandard roadway geometry through the bridge. If you all are familiar with it, when you're headed up the hill, your view looks somewhat like this. The vertical curve over the bridge is so sharp that it impedes your site distance of oncoming traffic. And likewise, in the downhill or east-westbound direction. And the fact that the roadway has horizontal curves entering and exiting the bridge also exacerbates the situation. So I just wanted to quickly cover the development timeline that this bridge has been on thus far. The, this project was first kind of identified in 2012, and we started the scoping process in 2021 with our alternatives presentation to the town in May of 2022, leading into a full project design starting in February of 2023. And we are currently in our preliminary design phase, which is where we identify the overall impacts of the project and the site design leading up to the bridge, as well as a bridge configuration. Through this process of preliminary design, we identified the presence of a scour concern, which I will address what scour is in a moment, which warrants at least a reconsideration of the project scope. So what is scour? Scour is basically when water speeds up around an impediment such as piers or the abutments of a bridge, and it's not properly protected or accounted for in the design. The soil can erode out from, from around the foundation elements as a result of the speeding up, much like the sand washes out from around your feet when you're standing in the waves at the beach. Generally, this is not a condition that we like to have on our bridges. As some of these pictures are on the more alarming side, if scour isn't fully designed for or accounted for in the design, frequently what we see with our older bridges is, such as this photo from Huntington, Vermont. The inspector here has a little orange rod in his hand that's actually about four feet long. It's going under the foundations of the bridge. This bridge in Rochester, Vermont, collapsed due to scour after Hurricane Irene. And the bottom left here is a bridge that has properly accounted for scour in its design, that even though you can see all the fill behind the bridge, the roadway is totally washed out, and all the soil from underneath the bridge is washed out. The driven pile foundations here are adequately supporting the bridge. And it's my understanding that this bridge was just backfilled and is still in service today. So, uh, this leads us to Bridge Number Seven. So when I did a site visit in October of 2022, I observed the top of the footing, combined with our record plans that we have and bridge inspection records. I can see that there's been various amounts of scour in the vicinity of the bridge over the years dating back to the 1980s. We had our hydraulic section run a scour analysis on this bridge, and the predictions are that during a flooding event, the scour could, the scour hole could reach up to 1.3 feet below the bottom of the footing in the, in front of the abutments. So as a result of that, we don't want to just ignore the condition because it is a hazard. Now, I will admit, the bridge has been here for quite some time, but that doesn't mean we should just leave it as is when we're investing a significant chunk of money into rehabilitating this bridge. So because of that, we will have to build in either some protection from this hazard or eliminate the hazard completely with a full bridge replacement. So the original scope that had been agreed to by the town for this bridge consisted of replacing the superstructure of the existing bridge with a new deck, railings, and a shallow superstructure, which would be a cast-in-place concrete slab. We were going to widen the bridge to meet the minimum standard width, which is nine-foot lanes and three-foot shoulders. And at the time, that option was presented as a 50-year design life. At this time, and you will see later on in this presentation, we are assuming a 40-year life, design life, rather than 50 as had been presented previously. This is just due to that full height vertical cracking I mentioned and the risk of scour. And then alongside the original scope, we were accepting a substandard bank full width, which is normally the minimum bridge span that we would do for a replacement design. But being a superstructure replacement, we were accepting substandard and also slightly substandard on the hydraulic capacity during a flooding event, and accepting the substandard roadway geometry. And we were going to maintain the same type of bridge railing that is on the bridge currently. So for the scour protection that would be required, that we've, now that we've determined that scour is a concern, we would have to protect the footings by armoring the stream bed, which would consist of removing the top two feet of stream bed, the full width of the, underneath the bridge, and extending upstream and downstream to the, at least the extents of the wing walls. And then this stone fill armoring would need to be monitored over the years. And if it were damaged in a flooding event, the town may be responsible for repairs to this armoring to continue to protect the bridge. So, as a result of all these different factors that I've presented, we are recommending a scope revision to a full bridge replacement rather than attempting to salvage these substructures. The full bridge replacement would consist of new abutments and deep foundations, driven pile foundations, with an 85-foot simple-span steel girder superstructure. It would be the same width as we would have been providing with the superstructure replacement with the nine-foot lanes and the three-foot shoulders. It would have, at a minimum, a 75-year design life. It would meet the bank full width requirement and the hydraulic standards. It would improve the roadway geometry, and we would also provide a better standard of bridge rail. And this would eliminate the scour hazard because the bridge would be designed to withstand a scour event. And also, in front of the abutments, but not across the entire width of the stream, we would be adding some stone fill to add further protection against any scour whatsoever. And the steel piling under the bridge, if scour were to happen, would be capable of supporting the bridge even without the surrounding material. And this would just overall increase the resiliency of the corridor in a large flooding event. So I'm just going to run you through a few comparisons to the alternatives just to give you some basis for making the decision with the roadway, bridge rail, and just show you a bit of how much work needs to be done to the existing bridge to make it work for the superstructure replacement, the roadway alignment, and touch on service life. So, uh, for the bridge typical section, the main thing I wanted to point out here, so the bottom that you see, and this is kind of small, I apologize, is the superstructure replacement option, that is the current scope. It would be, as you can see, a cast-in-place slab. And you can see some ever-so-light shading here around the existing dark lines. That is the existing structure. And notably, you can see here the bridge rail, same type, and it's slightly wider than the existing condition. The existing rail-to-rail is 23 feet 2 inches, and it would end up at being 24 feet rail-to-rail. So you gain about 10 inches of width. Now, with the proposed full bridge replacement, you can see the steel beams there and new bridge deck. And we'd be proposing a different type of bridge railing that we mounted on top of a curb, either two- or three-rail box beam. And while the roadway itself is still the same 24 feet, the actual rail face is six inches back from the face of curb. So the bridge would at least feel a little bit wider, especially for any pedestrians or bicyclists. And in terms of bridge rail, just want to highlight, well, the options. Top-left corner is another bridge on Brook Road here that was replaced, I think it was about five years ago or so, with the same face-mounted bridge rail. Now, this bridge rail, it meets design policy as is currently for the DOT. But with that being said, it is, I want to characterize it as non-preferred. It hasn't, it doesn't meet the new crash test standards proposed by federal, or in place by Federal Highway. Now, for this road, it's perfectly adequate. There's no problems with it. But that being said, the two options that would be available with a full bridge replacement are either the two-rail box beam down here on the bottom left, as seen in Bristol, Vermont, or the three-rail box beam, which is in Moretown, Vermont, as shown here. Both these options meet current crash test standards and actually exceed the requirements for Brook Road based on speeds and traffic volume. And just wanted to touch a little bit more on the roadway alignment just to illustrate the design conditions here. The existing conditions, what we call stopping site distance, which is the amount of distance from when you first see something on the horizon and react to and stop before seeing, is referred to as the stopping site distance, shown here in this little diagram that shows two cars over the crest of the hill. Existing conditions, your stopping site distance is 184 feet, and the minimum standard is 200. So it's fairly close. And with a superstructure replacement, we would just barely exceed that standard. But for a full bridge replacement, you'd be up to 246 feet, which would be a significant improvement over existing conditions. This curve parameter over here is just a measure of the sharpness of the curve, which is, and it's very slightly from the stopping site distance. And just generally, the full bridge replacement would meet the standard, and a superstructure replacement would still be slightly substandard. Now getting into the modifications to the abutment. What I'm illustrating here is to accommodate the extra width of the superstructure that was agreed on in the original scope. The roadway is getting slightly wider, which is pushing all the fill and roadway a little bit higher and a little bit wider. And when you combine that with the fact that the existing substructures are already, I would characterize, a little bit small for the road and bridge, all the walls are going to have to get a little bit higher and longer. So the diagonal hatching here is existing structure that we would have to remove. And then the dark solid gray is new concrete that would be added. The pictures down here, this is Wing Wall Three, and this one's, excuse me, I got that backwards. This is Wing Wall Two, this is Wing Wall One, line up with each Wing Wall shown in this diagram. So as you can see, cutting off a bunch of the wall, adding height and increasing length, including to the footings over here. One of the things I want to mention, this type of work is quite finicky to do. It involves, you have to cut away all the concrete with a nice, straight line, big concrete saw, excuse me, bring in a big concrete saw, and then followed by drilling holes in the concrete to put in reinforcing to stub on the extra wall height. Pretty labor-intensive work, takes time. And then the form work to match in with the existing is also finicky. Abutment Two is broadly the same as abutment One that I just showed. But the one thing I do want to point out is over here on the Wing Wall Three corner, the layout of the existing Wing Wall just doesn't work for even a superstructure replacement. So we would have to demolish the whole thing and even take down a little corner of the abutment to extend out the Wing Wall. This is due to, as you can kind of see here, the town's had to fill in stone fill over the years, I think especially after Irene on this corner, from getting washed out. So basically, what would happen, to accommodate the bridge rail and on even the superstructure replacement, we'd bring out the abutment in line further than what, than what is currently there, and then turn it back parallel to accommodate the rail and the stream and the stone fill to give, uh, to make sure that the stone fill's going to stay in place and that we can put in the guard rail to standards. And I do want to note, on both the last slide and this slide, the vertical cracks in the abutment would most likely not be addressed in the superstructure replacement scenario. And so I just wanted to show, this is a picture from my site visit in 2022. This is looking downstream. And in the event of a superstructure replacement, if we stay the course and continue down that path, the, this is going to remain basically unchanged. The superstructure might be slightly shallower. This Wing Wall is going to be slightly taller. But other than that, it's broadly going to look the same as today. We are going to replace all this, all the stream bed material with stone fill. I'm not sure exactly what that would look like. It might end up looking kind of similar to what's there today. It's just the stone fill is going to be engineered to a specific size and dimensions, such that it will properly armor against scour. And then, this is a conceptual rendering of what a bridge, full bridge replacement could look like, noting that just the increased span length and the stone fill on both channels, opening up the hydraulic area, which will help decrease those, the amount of scour that would be expected, increasing the hydraulic area. The bridge rail is going to be different than what's shown here. It just wasn't in the rendering. But the alignment would be slightly higher, but would help smooth out the substandard vertical curve. So, with the scope change, of course, there's some implications that you have to think about, which is, one that I want to highlight is construction schedule implications. The original agreement with the town was for a 60-day bridge closure. And replacement, or, and do that work while maintain, while the town maintains traffic on an off-site detour. That being said, now that we've dug into the design a little bit more, we feel that 60 days, even for a superstructure replacement, is kind of on the aggressive side. And if we don't increase that timeline, it could be at risk for increased bid prices due to the higher risk for contractors to do the work. And certainly, a longer bridge replacement, or a full bridge replacement is going to require a longer closure. I do want to say that we haven't put together any conceptual construction schedules at this time. This is just a general approximation of, from our experience, of what we could be expecting here. here. And then another piece that goes along with this is, of course, cost, which is a very big consideration in all of this. So relative to what had been presented before, for an annualized cost basis, we have reduced the design life of the superstructure replacement to 40 years. And also, we need to consider that maintenance of that stone armoring to protect against scour may be required over that service life. So at the moment, the total cost that we're projecting for a superstructure replacement would be $2.5 million, of which the town share is $62,500 for an annualized cost of $1,600 a year. Now with the full bridge replacement, we're getting an increased service life. But that being said, certainly, it's a lot more work. And one other piece that I would like to note is a bridge joint may be present on this full bridge replacement, which may require maintenance over the life of the bridge. I do, I'm going to, in final design, if we change the scope, I'm going to work on the design and make some refinements and hopefully eliminate that bridge joint. I can't promise I will be successful in eliminating it. With that being said, the full bridge replacement would cost $5 million, so double. And because it's a full bridge replacement rather than a superstructure replacement, the town share is going to increase from 2.5% to 5%, that's by state statute. So the town share would jump to $250,000. With a 75-year design life, that comes out to $3,300 of annualized cost. As far as where we are currently with the project schedule, we're about 75% complete on the superstructure replacement preliminary design. That's just all the site layout piece, not any of the structural design work. To change to a full replacement, it'd probably be about six more months to finish preliminary plans. So that would be about what you would expect if we decide to change the scope, it'd be about six months before you see something. That being said, that extra time will not impact year of construction, which is anticipated for 2027. So next steps is basically, we will wait to hear a response from you on the proposed scope change, or, excuse me, the recommended scope change. And at that time that we hear back whether we're staying the course or moving forward with the scope change, we would complete our preliminary plans for that option and distribute to you for comment. If changing scope, we would have to reprocess the finance and maintenance agreement, and there will be right of way process on this in either circumstance, whether it's a superstructure replacement or a full bridge replacement. And then there will be updates on the project plans and estimates at the final design. All right, I just talked a bunch, are there any questions?
Could I take you back to the annualized costs?
Yes, certainly.
Because I think we got to $3,000 on the full replacement, and I can't remember what it was for the...
No worries. $1,600 annualized cost for superstructure replacement.
Okay, all right.
$3,300 for the full bridge replacement.
Andy, the cost of the bridge replacements basically doubled since we started this discussion. Are you guys seeing any leveling off on pricing, or are we by 2027 going to see this as a $7.5 million project?
So I'll have to talk to you a little bit, but we did try to be, the reason this has gone up since you, since my original letter in January was that we're trying to be very conservative with this number so that it does not go up on us. We are generally seeing bids coming in closer to our estimated costs now that we've accounted for the inflation.
Yeah, there was a, certainly a period there for a few years back that it was aggressive price increases, it seemed like, month over month. I would say it seems like that's leveled out some, and exactly as Adam spoke to, especially for the replacement, we did go, tried to be very conservative with the price estimate as to hopefully not have to increase the price again, or increase the estimated price again.
Well, I think that's, would be our biggest concern is...
Certainly.
Because, not to talk details of engineering, which we're not qualified, we do have to talk the money end of it. And our concern is a 2027 picture, if you can predict it better than anybody else. And, and, and that's one of our biggest concerns.
Yeah, that's understood, and certainly a concern with the full bridge replacement, but please also keep in mind that with the rehab, there is similar risk. Granted, the dollar value is low, the total increase might be less overall, we do see significant increase in pricing, but you'd still run that risk with the rehab as well.
So how does, how does this rehabilitation versus replacement stack up with a catastrophic, a catastrophic event like Hurricane Irene? Will the, a replacement stand up to that?
Yes.
Kind of, yes. Will a rehabilitated bridge stand up to that?
That, there is more risk associated with the rehabilitation. The stone fill protection should protect the bridge, as long as it's maintained. That being said, there is inherently by the fact that you're protecting rather than eliminating the risk, there is more risk there.
Now, the scouring, and I don't want to get too much into the technical end of it, is on both wing, or both this superstructure, or on the abutments, both sides, or one, the east side? The down, down, or is it jetting underneath on both sides?
It's both sides. I observed the top of the footing on abutment two, the downhill end, or west side of the bridge, but there is also evidence of it occurring at the opposite corner of the bridge on the east side.
The critical section for us is that upstream side, if you're familiar with the site, there's a very large folder on the inlet, so that really constricts the channel through there, so that's where you're getting those increased velocities directly in front of that section of the abutment and wing wall. So that's almost most susceptible, but as you pointed out, on the downstream side, you can get...
Releases.
Yeah.
We deal with that down here every, every storm.
And when do you need a decision from us?
Adam, I'll defer to you on that, certainly.
I mean, within a couple weeks would be ideal, but I would say within a month probably will not affect the schedule.
I think within a month we can. The problem is we don't have a meeting scheduled until next month.
Until next month.
So, but we can definitely make a...
Well, I was going to say we could make a short meeting after the next planning commission, but we don't know how long the planning commission meeting is going to go on, so I hate that.
You guys will be good, Adam, with one month. I mean, we can get it right, yeah, I mean, we can even give you the date that our next meeting is.
Yep.
Well, we appreciate the re-presentation that you had to come back and re-present to us.
We appreciate the opportunity.
Yes, thank you for your time and attention, we appreciate it.
All right. That was very thorough, thank you.
You're welcome.
You didn't leave any questions, I was like, had a bunch of them, and you'd answer them like in your next sentence.
That means I did a good job making a great...
You did a great job.
All right?
All right.
Hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Well, you're packing that up, we'll move right on along to Greg, who used to hear from the Rapid Regional Planning Commission about municipal technical assistance program.
So, no, Craig, I'm Devin. No worries, I'm filling in for Craig.
I was going to say, you...
Nope, I know you don't mean. So, municipal technical assistance, we wanted to follow up sooner than we expected because unfortunately, we received some not great news from the agency of administration on this program. So, just to walk back, if you remember, I came in February, talked about this program aimed at smaller towns, wanting to try to get more ARPA dollars if there was a relative The program has gone through significant changes even after we met with you all in February, which caused us to take a pause, hoping that partners like Stone Environmental and others would be available to use for engineering services or scrubbing services in case there was a project that you guys all wanted, that we could leverage those resources. So we were under the interpretation and direction from AOA that they wanted a statement of work that's a decision on the project by the end of June. At the end of March, we received notice they're shutting this program down at the end of April. Completely blindsided by this news, and we feel like it's doing a massive disservice to the towns, because we told you one thing, we're getting opposite information. Basically, why this happened, AOA's gone through some significant changes, there wasn't much organization to this program, and they let the money out without understanding how much the pot was. And basically, whoever asked for money early on, unbeknownst to us, was given the money, and big, big chunks of money. So as of March 29th, there was, out of the $1.6 million available, $150,000 left. As of right now, not a single Rockland County town has been awarded money. So we are pretty salty about this whole thing, and we do plan to, you know, give that feedback to the agency, but we're in this position now where they are basically saying to us at the RPC, you need to have all your work done by the end of April, get all your draft statements of work in by then, and then they will make a decision. So that does give us the rest of this month, if Dambi wants to proceed with a certain project or two, we can draft these statements of work without any commitment on your part, and send them in for review, and then they will be stacked up against the rest of the applications statewide, and a decision will be made in early May. It's not ideal.
Are we wasting our time?
I don't know the answer, Tom, because apparently, there's so much unspent money at the RPC level, because we thought we had more time, they may try to claw some of that money back and put it back in the pool, which could balloon that 150, but to what level, I don't know. So, you know, what some of the other, so we have draft statements of work from every other town on our list here except for you guys in Shrewsbury. We'd like to get them in if there's something. What the other towns are doing, Benson is looking at upgrades to their town hall facilities, especially around like recreation and stormwater. They also submitted one for a town plan update. Mount Tabor is doing, they were, are likely to be awarded the BRIP grant for stormwater, sorry, flood risk analysis on Brooklyn Road. We submitted an application to, we're going to be the project manager to get more money to try to do more for them. Timeth is looking at a couple different things, West Avon's town plan, Pollitt's wastewater, Middle Town Springs is looking at either a library facility or solar, Subbury's looking at solar, Dambi, unknown, Hubbardens looking at some upgrades for their town office, Shrewsbury unknown, Proctor's wastewater, so.
See, our, we wanted to call with Mount Tabor.
Yeah.
And they're kind of in the right realm, but wrong road.
Right realm, wrong road, and I learned more about that project since, because I wanted to pursue that for you guys too. It sounds like it's, like you said, so disconnected that it would, you'd really just want to apply for your own study within your area and that part of Mount Tabor, but separate from the study area that they're doing. So it sounds like two different projects ultimately would be needed. Now, there is hazard mitigation grants open now, those, the applications I think are due in sometime in May. That's what funded their study. So if that was something you're interested in, we could put that down, say that on behalf of the town, we're going to work with you to apply for that grant and then manage it when it comes due and try to do more collaboration with Mount Tabor. That could be one of them. I don't think it would be very expensive, so that could put you up the list, because they're going to probably look favorably on things that are less expensive. You know, something like that, I think, would be, you know, in the $10,000 range or $15,000, that'd be about it. The study itself would be much more, you know, the study itself would be, you know, 50, 70,000, but that would be grant covered. This would just be for the management and application of that grant.
So I'm confused now, you were, it's going to be two different pots of money, we're going to, the study...
Yeah, so this is that complicating factor. MTAP would basically pay for the RPC to apply on your behalf, prepare the application, and then manage it once, if you're awarded.
Right.
And then that, that grant itself would pay for the study.
Now, can we work that project into Mount Tabor? Because it does us no good, because if we don't actually go over that line...
Right.
We're...
You're only getting half the picture.
Well, yeah.
Well, half the street is in Mount Tabor.
Right.
And, and the problem is, is are they going to focus, I mean, the study that we would be looking for, they would actually try to resolve the issue there, which they would have to look at both sides, you know, the, the Mount Tabor side, and that it wouldn't be limited to Dambi's side even though it was our money?
Well, that's something we'd have to all work out and have a conversation with Mount Tabor.
Because that was disappointing that they wanted to go with the Brooklyn Road, which I understand they've got problems.
Right, right.
But they've got problems on this side too.
Right. So that's something we could certainly bring to Mount Tabor and talk to them about, you know, especially if there is no match or a very low match, and Dambi's willing to cover that. I can't see why Mount Tabor wouldn't come to the table, but I can't speak to them, right? You know, it would seem like it would be mutually beneficial. That's certainly something we could try to coordinate for you guys on that end, if, if you want to pursue that direction. And again, you know, I, I feel personally disappointed in this whole thing. I thought this was going to be a real opportunity, but political programs are political programs, and it wasn't well thought out. It was even worse implementation, so.
So basically, if we go with that, you, you'll write that up as the direction we want to go?
Yeah, so what I can do, and I can submit this without a formal vote from you all tonight, because it's only a draft and you're not committing to anything. So if you want me to pursue that, I can draft it up, shoot it over to AOA, and it will, it will just go into the pile, and then they'll sort it out at the end of April.
Well, I don't think we ever discussed anything else, so, I mean, as far as any other areas?
No.
That were...
Yeah, I was looking at my notes from that February meeting, this is really the thing, you know, this was it. So I can, I'm happy to do that, draft it up, submit it right away, and then I'll let you guys know as soon as we do as to the outcome. And in the long term, you know, we're going to really advocate that if this program were to ever be redone, it would have to be a lot clearer, better transparency, and some structure in place. So all regions could get a piece of the pot. I, I just, I can't believe this is how it ended, you know?
Now...
I'd like to see you proceed, are we in agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good. All right, I will do that.
We appreciate you giving us the bad news and the good news.
Hard to follow up the $250,000 request, so I was like, hoping to give you money, not ask for more, but we'll let you know. Thank you for the time tonight, appreciate it.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not doing anything with... So we're not doing anything with tax collector?
No, we're still in until the end of April, and then come to our May meeting. Uh, so the next thing is the Safe Streets and Roads funding. Um, did you all get copies of that? I didn't pass any out tonight, but I thought you had it.
You gave them to us the other night.
Yeah. Um, essentially, it's if um we want to apply to purchase any kind of traffic control devices, radars, lidars, speed trailers, message trailers, traffic data collector.
I wonder if a traffic data collector would work?
Just see them what they have for traffic in different areas.
Well, and, and that was a subject that was gonna come up in our next area here is um, we wanted to start maybe doing some traffic studies on one or two roads. Um, and we were gonna approach the state on it, but I'm wondering if that, something in there would, they would recommend that we use if it is as accurate as.
I'm gonna get a grant for it. I don't see why not.
Yeah.
Try it.
The only question I would have on that, and I don't see why they wouldn't, but would be whether or not the sheriff's department would accept our results if it's not their machine. You know, to say that we didn't set it up properly, or we didn't give it enough time, or too much time, or.
Well, then the question is, how often are we really gonna use it? You know, is it gonna be used two or three times?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we would use it for, for the first, I mean, that's the problem when they limit what you're.
Yeah.
We can find plenty of things we like, but if it's not on the list, unless we.
So to me, it almost seems like we should ask the Agency of Transportation to do the.
What were the other things on there that we were?
They have the message trailers, um radar, lidar, speed trailer.
Do we wanna get a speed trailer?
That one you just move around, it tells how fast people are driving?
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if they help. I mean, I would hope that with enforcement sitting down the road, it would, you know, you're doing 60, and he's sitting there, um.
Well, and the thing is, it takes up space. What are you gonna do? Put it on somebody's lawn, or, you know, like on the.
Well, they're doing, pretty much, they'll fit in a right-of-way anywhere.
Right. Yeah, we have plenty of right-of-way space. We just need to decide if that's um gonna help us, or if it's.
Have you noticed um any effectiveness or not effectiveness of the sign that we have down past your road?
Personally, I haven't. Um, I'm not sure if they work, um, does.
When I see the trailers out in my travels, I definitely pay more attention to how fast I'm going. I, I don't know why, but it seems to get your attention, because they moved it in there. It's not there all the time.
Right.
And you see one, and you come around the corner or whatever, and you forgot to slow down. I, it typically makes you slow down.
I mean, if it's a grant, why not apply for it? And let's see if it helps. I mean, we definitely have a speed issue still.
It can't hurt.
Oh, we have a speed issue.
Yeah.
So you're thinking the speed trailer?
Yeah. Do you want us to make a motion on it, or do you want us to just look? I'll make a motion that we apply for the grant for the speed trailer.
I'll second it.
Motion is made and seconded. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so our annual event, just like Christmas, is Dump Day in Danby, and um Maureen and Byron have agreed to work if it is either the first or second weekend of June, which would be June 1st or June 8th. Um, so we can pick a date, and I gave you a list of last year's prices to see how you feel about those, if you wanna increase any of these.
Now, the $35 for an appliance.
With Freon.
With Freon. What is that compared to, does anyone know what it costs to bring a refrigerator to?
I don't currently have.
I didn't know if we're, if that's a good number, or a.
Yeah. Can we set the dump day and set the prices at the next meeting, which give us time to.
Yeah.
Check that number?
It's a good idea. I guess we could call Mark Shea, right?
Yeah. Um, I mean, are typically, and Clarky could answer that, are we losing money, or, or?
I don't have the money amounts.
Yeah, no.
I know that we certainly have decreased as far as.
It's decreased or increased?
Decreased.
So we're not getting the number of people anymore?
Absolutely not.
No. And we did lose money last year. I'm thinking it was $1,200.
So the question is, do we wanna actually raise prices, or try and leave them the same to encourage people to come?
Well, that's it. I mean, if it's gonna cost them as much or more to come here and on one given day, should we try to encourage? I mean, I don't know if we're getting the roadside dumping as bad as we used to.
No.
I don't think we're getting it as bad as we used to, but we're still getting some.
Absolutely.
So, yeah, no, I, I, I think that's the thing is, we wanna encourage people to use it, but.
Yeah, I think we, it's easy. You're better. The loss is okay, because they're not throwing it over the map.
Well, in, in, you know, when they started this, it was.
Oh, they used to.
I mean, yeah, I mean, you would find all these roads that they were dumped off of, and at least now it's, it's not nearly as bad. Um, but, yeah, I, and I think as we said the last year when we set the prices, we weren't in it to make money at all. Yeah. We just wanted to actually clean up the town and do it as part of our action.
So I guess I'd go ahead and make the motion that we leave the price list the way it is.
Do we wanna check on our refrigerators still to see how?
My concern is the refrigerator cost.
Yeah. You think it could be substantial?
Well, I don't, I, no, I'm just, I, I'm just wondering where we're at with that. That's, I hate to put that number in. Um, and that was last year's number, was it?
Yes.
Who counted refrigerators when they, I'm just wondering if it actually discouraged or encouraged at that number?
Even without actually going back and looking to see if there's a record of it, I wanna say we only had maybe two either refrigerator or freezers.
Yeah.
That the most of the appliances were like washing machines or dryers.
Right. And I guess we don't really.
Special on those at $5.
Um, yeah, I mean, I'm good with keeping them the same if that was last year's number, unless we really thought we were gonna, I mean, we're not gonna lower any of these others.
No. And, you know, based on the philosophy of making it a convenient service, if we have to.
All right. Did you make a motion, Steve?
I made a motion to leave the prices the same.
I second it.
Okay, could we also incorporate?
And I'll set the date for June 1st.
Okay. And you're agreed on?
Yep.
Second. Okay, so the motion is to have Dump Day on June 1st and keep the prices the same as last year. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I heard no abstentions or negative votes. I'll pass unanimously. And then we go into the Road Commissioners Report. Sign the report on current conditions and projects.
All right, well, I'm gonna give mine while we're signing anything, if you want, or, or you gotta.
We signed the Bridges Certification.
Yeah, our roads and bridges. This is our annual financial plan. Jen went through that, must be with Patrick. I'll let you sign top. Um, I guess the one thing, and this isn't a report, but it's up for discussion, is um, we were, um, I remember Liz Brad and I had discussed um doing a traffic study um on Baker Brook Road, having the state help us out with that. Um, we have had some complaints about truck traffic and stuff. So once the roads, they're unposted now, correct?
The roads are unposted now.
Um, we wanna do a traffic study to actually get a real count of what's, is going on on Baker Brook Road. Um, we did receive our new truck. Was that you driving it, Steve?
When we met you, yes, that was me driving it.
Okay, we got a new truck with no dents in it, correct, Steve?
No dents so far.
Okay.
It has a pretty flag on it, too.
Um, we submitted our road grant application. Clarky?
I think so.
And our structures grant, um, in the last day or two. We've got, we have a couple more days to go on it, but we're, we're good with it. Um, they are, your guys are starting, you're ditching as soon as things dry out? I'm gonna let you take over on that part.
Uh, well, Larry's been out and started grading. We've had a couple of roads that he was able to get onto this past week. Next week, if the weather's good, I plan on having him get as much as he can done. Uh, we're trying to get some of the regular maintenance done after winter, cleaning the plows and wings, getting them repainted, uh, just making sure that everything's back to the way it should be before summer work. And then as soon as we have dig safe numbers, we're gonna start stumping Timoth Pond Road and working on Baker Brook again. But we'll probably be backing off on tree projects for a while so that we can work on ditches.
And grading.
And grading, I guess. Grading is top priority right now.
Yep. Yeah, next week actually should be a good week. We got enough moisture in the ground, and it's warm. So a dry week after, after a wet week is a great week for grading. So hopefully he can hit them hard.
Okay, Brad, that's all you from there.
Okay, then, other than that, um, as far as roads are concerned, we have fleet permits to approve for camp, precast concrete, consolidated communications, Cota and Cota, Polar Sand and Gravel, Herman Construction, Miles Lumber, New England Quality Services, Pike Industries, Structural Wood Corporation, and Driscoll Brothers.
I'll make the motion that we approve the fleet permits.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those fleet permits have been approved. So then the next thing would be to.
One thing I would, you've been up Scotts Hill Road lately.
Yep.
That road's just kinda right, right in front of Walt's tears.
It's.
No, it's just coming right up now.
Oh, did it come?
It's there. It's got, we're getting some holes like that. The blacktop's gone.
Hmm.
It's something we may have to look at for whether to mill out a section and just do something right there temporarily this summer. I don't know what the paving plan is.
No, our paving plan was Timoth Road, but we can always do it on this.
Something to look at if we gotta do.
Yeah, no, I had noticed it made a dip there.
Well, that's on the other side of the road, but right against Walt's lawn.
Okay.
Yeah, and we put, oh, yardage material in there, a blacktop, last year.
I think what it needs, really needs is, we almost need to ditch into Walt's lawn.
Because it's holding water.
Got a place to go, and then, once it started, I just want, I didn't know if.
You can put that on your ditch list, so.
My ditch list is 100, and if somebody's gonna handle some.
That's just one something I noticed, is everybody's driving around that right now on that Scotts Hill Road.
Well, we'll definitely get it patched when we get the plan open.
Okay, so then the next thing, if we have no more road issues, would be to entertain a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters.
I'll make the motion.
The motion is made and seconded, and that clock looks like 8:07. We are back in session at 8:38. Is there any old business to come before the board? Not hearing any. Is there any new business?
I'll make the motion, adjourn.
Okay, motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Yep.